Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless our flesh.
All right, folks, here's the point of what we're trying to accomplish tonight. We've had no lines of communication. Uh, we have a lot of needs down here. This is chaos. It's not just broad channels, all over the place. But we got hit, and we got hit hard. We brought in tonight, we have Assemblyman Goldfeder here, we have Councilman Ulrich here, we have Inspector Alexa here, I believe we've got Bill de Blasio, Congressman Turner is supposedly on the way also. But we don't want to wait too long because we know everybody here wants to get started. Your home's a mess and you want to get back home. So, we're gonna get started. Here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna present the summary of what we've gotten so far as far as feedback about the immediate needs for Broad Channel. And we're gonna run down them, and then we got a plan here for what we'd like to see instituted by the city. And then we're gonna ask each of the representatives and the captain, the inspector, I'm sorry, to speak about what they're doing. And then we're gonna go to the floor for questions. And this Broad Channel's got a lot of smart people out here, and I know that you're gonna have some good points that we're not gonna cover, right? So, I don't pretend that this summary... Come on in and move in, folks, they're all the way in the back. Everybody move in if you could.
Danny, can we get a round of applause for the caterer?
All right, let's start with the CNO Resorts. The CNO Resorts has brought this town to us, all right? They got the laborers' union, and I apologize, I didn't remember the number. They were fantastic. What's that? Ten, ten Laborers' Union, they came down here and scrubbed it up. And Tim Pearson.
Thank you, thank you.
About twenty-five minutes ago, he walked into this room, it was covered with water and mud, all right? About fifty of us got on our hands and knees and scrubbed it up, at least to have an area that we could work at, all right? So, we're moving slowly to having an area where we can work and have something. Here's what we're envisioning, and we hope that we can get the city and everybody to go along with it. We need a staging area, all right? We need a staging area, we're looking for the Legion to become that staging area. We need a command presence outside in the former NYPD, where we can get some generators, get some lights. We got clothing coming in, we can touch off, we're having some clothing here, batteries, water, food coming in, people can't get out of here. It could be a meeting place, and we could have subsequent meetings to find out what we need to do with FEMA, insurance companies that we can't get a hold of, and all of those things. So, tonight is not a FEMA meeting. FEMA, at this point, is just transitioning from rescue and recovery. If you haven't been to Rockaway over there, half of it's burned down in Breezy Point. They're still looking in the attics for people. I know we're frustrated, rightfully so. We will have FEMA here, we will have the insurance companies here, we will work to do that. That's not tonight's meeting. Tonight's meeting is to look at what we need, all right? I got a list of things here that we're looking for. First and foremost is this place is a staging area with lights and electricity and food. People can't get off the island, some of them don't have gas, and nobody has a car. We're looking to establish that so you can walk up here during the day and get some food. Right now, before I forget, in the BCAC Annex, there's food, there's clothing, there's, um, baby food, all right? If you're wiped out and you need a sweatshirt, you need some clothes, stop over there. They're manning it from nine to fourth right now. We're bringing additional clothing that's been coming in tonight. Good people from up north who ever got hit are bringing it down, and we expect more, okay? So, that's where we're gonna be putting...
And the firehouse, too.
And the firehouse, too. So, that's where we're gonna be going with all of those supplies. We have a lot of things that are starting to build up, and we can get them out to you, okay? In terms of the town and what we need, what we're looking at is, originally, we had an access problem. It seems like we got that cleared up as far as getting in and out of the town, but let me know if that's not the case. Donations, we're looking to get down here for anybody you're talking to who has friends, relatives that are looking to send it. We're looking to get here through the BCAC as a place, as an annex to this place where we can put our stuff. Uh, we're looking for reports on crime, what's going on, there's a lot of rumors running around. We're looking for reports from Con Edison. First and foremost, we're putting two things as our priorities. Food for those who don't have it, and electric restored, because nobody could do anything without electric. We need to get Con Edison here, we need to know what's going on with the electric system. We're gonna get power back. Gasoline is becoming a critical issue. Some of us, luckily, we've got generators. We're putting those generators out to good use, we're supplying our neighbors, can't get gas. We want an answer on what's going on. I originally just heard on the way here that the harbor was closed and the gasoline couldn't get in. I don't know if that's true. Again, that's why we want the line of communication up through OEM and back down here so we can find out what's going on. We need to get gas. People are leaving the island, they can't get back on because they're running out of gas. We have, uh, we have, um, uh, let's see, okay, uh, okay. You know what? Basically, I have... Okay, yeah, there's a rumor going around that someone says they're gonna condemn the town. Nobody's condemning the town, okay? It's not happening. That's a rumor, it's not condemning, okay? So, that idea, I think, to condemn Broad Channel is not happening, right? Broad Channel's been here for a long time, we've had bad times before, this is gonna rise up there, maybe one of the toughest times we ever had. But I'm out there already, and I gotta be, I gotta say, I'm amazed. Neighbors are helping neighbors, everybody's chipping in, that's what we need to do. You see your neighbor, she's old, help her out, right? It's the greatest town and city, and that's what we're famous for, all right? You know, we all love the water, but that's not what makes Broad Channel special, it's everybody helping each other out. So, if you see your friends, your neighbors, ask them if they got food. You'd be surprised. I mean, you're thinking, oh, everybody's got food, some people don't have cars, they can't get out. And get the word out that we're gonna have supplies down here, okay? So, right now, um, I'm gonna pass the bullhorn off, and I'm gonna start, Congressman's not here yet, we usually start the chain down. We have the Assemblymen here. Assemblyman Goldfeder and Councilman Ulrich have been on my phone 24/7, and if we didn't get something, I'll tell you what, they were cursing their heads off at OEM and the city, I'm telling you. I was on the phone with them as they were losing patience, okay? Nothing less than the patience we're losing in getting the freaking bridge open, getting the supplies we need down here. So, they've made huge, huge health mistakes, I'm telling you right now, we're lucky to have. I'm gonna pass the bullhorn off, Congressman's not here, we're gonna go to the Assemblyman and let him speak, then we're gonna go to Councilman Ulrich. Uh, we're gonna then go, if another elected official moves in here, if not, we'll go to the inspector, Scott Alexa from the Hundred Precinct. Uh, we talked to him yesterday, yesterday's meeting resulted in additional patrol, but there's a lot of rumors he can speak to that. Then we'll open the floor up and think about what we need that we didn't cover and what might be something that is gonna add to this discussion here. And if you could move in, people are stuck in the back of the room, they can't get in, folks. Squeeze on up, everybody in the back, like, hear us, all right? Assemblyman Goldfeder.
At first, I think everybody would agree, I think we gotta give a big round of applause to Dan Mundy. Really. He is, as Eric said, our hometown hero, and not just on this, it's not just the... He's there 24/7, all the time, not just in the emergencies, and I wanna give him a huge eye for my...
Yeah.
Number two, you know, Inspector Alexa, he's got the hardest job. He's, he got evacuated out of his precinct in the earliest part of the storm, and working out of a small command center, he has been able to keep our peninsula and Broad Channel and our island safe. And I wanna give him a big round of applause, he's done a great job. Do a resource. Think about being outside your home to run a precinct, to run a police force outside of his home is almost impossible, and he's done a great job, and he continues to do a great job. Of course, my colleague, I mean, I think I wanna be the first to say, let's give him a big round of applause, his wife had a baby yesterday.
You didn't name it Sandy, did you?
I named it, Representative, I was here, when I'm here, I'm speaking for all my colleagues. I mean, we've got a great group of elected officials, we're gonna make sure that nobody forgets who's here and what makes this community great. That's what we're here for, that's what you elected us to do, and we have done that. So, I'm excited. Let me tell ya, everybody is affected. My home had five feet of water, my home is pretty destroyed, I haven't even been there yet to take a look at it. This is my priority. Rockaway, Broad Channel, Howard Beach, making sure we have the essential services. But what Dan said is right, they're still pulling people out of basements, search and rescue is still going on, we're almost near the end in Rockaway. I believe that search and rescue is starting to wind down, and we're gonna, we're gonna evolve into the next step, and get FEMA out here, making sure they're on, not, not over there, not over there, here, in Broad Channel, making sure they're answering questions, taking claims, giving you the information that you wanna do, because the best thing we can do is to limit the confusion, make sure the truth is out there, and that everybody knows what is going on. So, we're here for you, we're, you know, we're working as a really great team. I'm calling him, he's calling me, we're all working together, and I just wanna thank you, because this really is a great community. What's really great about it is that people here are helping each other. We're not waiting for everybody else to come and save us, they're helping each other, and that's what's great. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, thank you. That's, that's why I wasn't here last night, my wife gave birth to our first child, seven forty-two, last night. My wife's in Flushing Hospital right now, I got to see her for a half hour earlier today. The hospital is on a generator, power generator, because there's no power up there either. On the way down here, I passed lines, and if I tell you lines, ten blocks long, a hundred fifty, two hundred cars deep, people trying to find gas stations with gas. This isn't Kew Gardens, this isn't Flushing, you know, so this is affecting people everywhere. One of the things I wanna talk about that we're gonna do tonight here, I, we're handing out some flyers, we're gonna have a hot dinner here. And I'm very grateful for Resorts World for providing a hot lunch, but I thought it was... Thank you. I thought it was very important that we have a hot dinner here, and I called the number of the restaurants, Abraccio Mentos is sending food, Russo's on the bay, he's on generator, he's sending some food. I called Woodhaven House, they're sending some beer tonight, because I think we could all... I think we could all use a drink at this point.
Scotch would be nice.
We're gonna have hot coffee.
Don't get greedy.
We got, we got hot coffee, we're gonna have cake, we're gonna have some juice in here, I got the generator on the way, we're gonna have the lights on in this place, so it's six o'clock tonight, you're not gonna be eating bologna sandwiches or peanut butter and jelly, you can have a hot meal. Also, the Red Cross, from what I understand, the Red Cross and FEMA are on their way, they're sending a thousand ready meals, you can have them for tomorrow, save them for tomorrow. You shouldn't have to worry about how you're gonna fill your stomach tonight and today, because we have that covered, and I'm gonna thank all the people that donated all this stuff later, so that's gonna be right here at 6:00 PM tonight.
Stay here.
I put on Facebook last night, when I got home from the hospital around ten o'clock, I put a post on Facebook asking people to donate clothes, diapers, toiletries, anything that can just make people's lives a little bit better. I asked people to bring it to my Ozone Park District office, at this hour, I can't even open the front door. So, later tonight, we will be bringing a lot of those supplies, clothes, brand-new toiletries, toothpaste, toilet paper, diapers, you name it, we're gonna bring in here, it's for you to take, this is our first stop. This, this community, let me just say something, you know what gets me very upset? When I turn on the television and the city's talking about the marathon on Sunday.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't give a rat's ass about the New York City Marathon.
Yeah, yeah.
Who gives a shit?
And I got news for you, and this is not directed at the police inspector, but if they take one police officer off the streets of my district and my community, you will see me on every news channel ripping the mayor and anybody else who acts like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we need our props here in this community, protecting the people and the property in this community, and we are gonna be here for you. I was here before the storm, I was here three hours, you know, right before the storm, I was here right after the storm, I'm here today, I am going to be with you until life gets back to normal, you can count on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next mayor.
Let me just start off with, you wanna hear me now?
Yes.
I, I know your sense of frustration, I can see it. A few minutes I spent outside, there wasn't a few minutes.
There you go.
Better, you tell me.
Much better.
Much better, all right. I feel your sense of frustration, I was out walking around last night, and you told me exactly how you feel, and I feel that ten times over. All right, I know that, all right? And I've heard it from every community here, and we, we trying, we're doing as much as we, we're doing as much as we possibly can with what we have at this particular point, all right? Luckily, again, from my walk-through here last night, we were able to go back, and we're gonna secure a police temporary vehicle that we're gonna put outside, all right? That's on its way here if it's not here already. Uh, speaking to Dan and some of the people last night, we got some extra patrols up here last night, we're gonna try and continue their presence and keep their presence out here for you. Uh, there's, there's a lot happening throughout the precinct, we're juggling all the resources that the NYPD has, we're calling people in from other boroughs, all parts of the city, all the agencies, we're doing as much for you as we possibly can, and we wanna do more. We're as frustrated as you are for not getting the service as we are not being able to give you the service, all right? We're trying to, we're defining it, we're taking the information you're giving us, and it's important, and that's why I'm here, all right? I, I, you know, I can't tell you the sense of frustration, when I was sitting in that station house overnight, when this water came up, and I couldn't get out there to help you or anybody in this community, all right? We couldn't do a thing until that water receded, and then when it did, we had to rebuild the precinct, and we're in the process of doing that, all right? It's difficult, but we're here, we never left, and we're still here, and we're gonna stay here, all right? But I need your help, and I need the community to help to break everything back to normal here. All right, there are reports of crime, there are some break-ins, there's some property theft.
Over and out.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, probably everywhere, all right?
Let them talk. Why, Broad Channel?
I'm trying, you know, I haven't had the chance to sit down and read each individual report, but walking through the community, people have told me there were some thefts here, all right? I don't recall reading the reports. Other parts of Rockaway, yes, there have been some crimes committed, again, property thefts, things of that nature. Uh, we do everything we can, again, to avoid that. We have a huge police presence that's given to us on a daily basis, and we look at these crime stats, and we look at where problems are coming, and we look at, and we talk to the community, we try to fill these needs as best we can. And we, we do put people out there to address the conditions, sir? Well, that's a question.
Why are we asking whether we're still in support in the electricity of our...
We'll talk about that later.
We'll get to that in one minute, we have a good question, we'll get right to that. We'll let it finish, and then we're gonna go, there's no elected official, and then we're gonna go to questions from the town.
Repeat the question, so we can hear.
If the question's good, it was about electricity, we're gonna get to that in a minute, because he doesn't, he's not the electrical guy, okay?
He might be.
I'm sorry, does anybody else have a question that I can answer?
Yeah, I know cell service, so...
No, sir. All right, let me, all right, let's go, I, I, again, I'm not the expert in all this, but I can promise you, just from being out here and talking to every part of this community, one of the first things that we've been begging for from day one is we have to feed you and give you something warm, food, period, basic essentials, but we know you need that, and we're trying hard, and we're being promised over and over again that that's coming in here tonight, all right? As far as cell phone service, the same thing, I don't have it either. If I didn't have a police radio, I wouldn't be able to contact with anybody. We're lucky enough to have that, and that's helping us out quite a bit. Um, again, I've been in contact with numerous people during the day, we're supposedly making some headway regarding our cell phone service. Uh, a couple parts of the Rockways I've been in today, I've had some spot reception, so I hope it's on its way back. I've seen some Verizon trucks in the area, I'm hoping there's some temporary cell sites coming to us. The hotline's gonna be another story, but I think there's some temporary cell service coming to us soon.
I have a question.
All right, listen, folks, we're gonna get to all the que... And then we're gonna repeat them for everybody. We have one more person who's gonna speak, I want every elected person to speak, because then we're gonna expect things from them, and I know they're gonna help us out. Then we're gonna go to the questions, and then we'll get that question to the person most likely to answer. An electrical question in the city of New York is gonna be answered by the councilman, right? Okay, so, we're gonna give it to him in a moment, all right? And we'll get all the questions answered. We have, um...
Over here.
Hold on, one second, okay? We have, okay, Phil de Blasio's here, he came down to see what the town needs, okay, he's gonna stay here to hear it, let's see what he has to say.
Very much, Dan. Thank you. Look, I, I'm hearing loud and clear here and all over the Rockways, other neighborhoods, food and water is the first thing, we're pushing the National Guard, we're pushing the state, we're pushing OEM, and I think what we wanna do first and foremost is get the hours to be as long as possible for the food and water distribution. After that, we're gonna work case by case to try and help people. I know in the long haul, it's gonna be about getting the insurance claims, getting the money from FEMA for stores and for homes, we're gonna work with you on all that, we're gonna be here for quite a while in the coming weeks to get that done. But the bottom line is, please, we know food and water is the first concern, and obviously public safety. Uh, people from my office are gonna be out here, if there's anything we can help you with individually in the meantime, or any seniors in particular need, anyone that needs special help, let us know, and we'll try and get additional city resources to them. Thank you.
All right, folks, you heard from everybody, now we're gonna hear from you, all right? Answer to put the question up, we'll get to everybody, I'll repeat the question, and then we'll pass it off to somebody to start.
Before the other questions, let's give a round of applause for sanitation, man.
Sanitation's been unbelievable, unbelievable, their agency presence has been the greatest one here. I'm gonna start here, work my way back and around, okay? Question, go ahead.
What's the timetable with Con Ed on getting us power back?
Okay, first question is, and the most important, what is the timetable on Con Edison getting back? We're gonna pass this off to the councilman and the assemblyman, and we're looking to see what they have for us right now, and if they don't have an immediate answer, when can we get an answer back through OEM or somebody in the city to tell us what is their plan and what do they figure? All right, hold on. The estimates are ranging right now, what they're telling everybody is three to ten days, and you know what? That's not adequate for us, and what we're hoping to get right now is get the councilman and the assemblyman to go back and go through OEM, and the point that we made to them since the end of the storm was that the normal priority restoration that Con Edison follows puts Broad Channel last. We're the last on the leg, you're one of two family dwellings, that's just the way it is. In this case, okay, I've been screaming about this from day one, and they've been bringing it back to OEM, that's unacceptable, okay? We need to have Broad Channel made a priority. Rockaway's lifer, they don't have to worry about it, until we get electric, that's gonna be a problem.
What's the plan with the oil cleanup?
Two hundred, three hundred oil tanks, we don't even know how many flipped over, all right? They're all over the place, the question is, what's the plan for the cleanup? I'll tell you right now, there's no simple plan for a cleanup for that, okay? If it's in the water, you use booms in your dike, try to get it out, that already floated away. If it's in the sand, we're looking to see if we get a DEP representative here, they didn't show up, to find out whether or not an environmental firm is willing to come down, but the most they're gonna offer here is pads, okay? If it's in the soil, and you smell it, you're gonna either wash it down and then try and get it out by digging it out. We don't have a quick answer, because there's really no quick answer. I'll tell you right now, from a hazmat perspective, when oil falls on the ground, it goes in the soil, normally, it comes in, you have to remove the soil and get rid of it, okay? I don't know if that's possible right now. It's a huge concern, there's no quick, real fast answer to what you're asking.
Is our drinking water safe?
All right, the question is, is it safe, okay? I can't tell you, nobody can tell you right now, we've got no determined hazard, we've heard nothing from the city DEP on the water being contaminated, okay? We have not had any reports, I have heard reports of Long Island, it's a separate system. We're a self-contained system, obviously, you know, we get it from up north, and you know what? Right now, there's no reports coming out of NYC that the city order...
Give them a chance to talk.
Okay, somebody's got some information on the water, go ahead.
Raise your hand.
All right, if you have some real information, let me know, absolutely. If you're concerned, okay, tested it? All right, you know what? We'll bring that que, we'll bring back, we'll bring back that concern, that's a good point, okay? Long Island is a separate system, Long Island is contaminated, it is contaminated, right? They have already said that. All right, listen, listen to me, it's a good point, I don't need you yelling, okay? That's why we're here. Right, good point, you know what? We're gonna bring that back to DEP to get it tested. What I'm giving you is that initial reports, initial reports, the system is a closed system, it's under pressure, it's about fifty pounds per square inch inside a main of a hydrant. Normally, unless you have a water main break, you don't get contaminated water. I'm not telling you that's the case, I'm telling you that NYC normally comes out with the notifications, they've come out about five hundred of them so far, they're not saying it's contaminated. You got a great point, we're gonna bring that back, we're gonna ask DEP to come down here and test the water. Good point.
Safety issue about the electric, everybody's service went...
Quiet.
Everybody's service went underwater, pretty much. When they turn on the power, is it gonna, like, go on fire, we're gonna have a breezy point issue?
Okay, there's a great point, and here's what the question was. When the electric comes back on, what should we expect with the panel and the meters? In a minute, I'm gonna ask if we have an electrical expert here, because I'm not one. I know this much, the main breaker in everybody's home, whether you live in there or you just left and you came back to clean up, should be shut off, okay? It should be shut down, and then it's gonna be a determination of, it seems to me, what I'm hearing from some of the people who are experts, is that if you have some boxes that are hit, and yet the panel wasn't hit, you're in better shape, and maybe you'll leave them off. But I can't speak directly to that. What we're expecting is, yes, the restoration of power is gonna put live juice back on the wires and coming into the meter. All right, we're trying to find out from Con Ed, and we've asked them to come here, we haven't had a representative come here, and we're gonna look to do a follow-up meeting with them, because people are saying, if my water, my meter was underwater outside, the glass meter, is it gonna go on fire? I don't know the answer, and that's right, would we have a fire? I can't tell you that. Is there anybody here who is an expert and would like to speak to the issue?
Shut your main off, shut all your breakers off, turn your heater on, what breaks this is...
All right, so, they're saying the same thing of...
You need to wear the water to dry it out.
Fifty-fifty, your house is on fire.
Okay, so, we got a gentleman here saying there's a good chance your house is going on fire. Nobody here is an expert, we're not gonna tell you what to do. I'll tell you what I know from previous floods, okay? I know people who were hit, their boxes got hit, they tried, they let them dry out, they put the upstairs on, or areas that they knew individually were not affected, if that's even possible, I don't know. And then they put them on one at a time. I'm not advising you to do that, I'm not an expert, I'm telling you what some people have done, they've been there, they waited to see what's going on. The safest bet, get a new electrician to go for a new service. I don't think everybody's gonna do that, so, we're trying to approach it in a logical fashion, we need Con Edison here to answer it. The problem is, when you get to the official level with Con Edison, it's gonna be, if there was water in there, don't turn it on, okay? You're gonna have to make your own determination, if you have doubts about it, you think you were seriously impacted, you need to get an electrician in.
Check you out.
Check you.
All right, the question is, I can't get in touch with FEMA, all right? So, legitimate question, I think it's one eight hundred?
No, it's an eight-six-six number.
Okay, we were calling, all right, you're okay?
They put you on hold, and then you're disconnected when you put in the PIN code. They put you on hold, and then you're disconnected when you put in the PIN code. It's 866-074946.
Eight, eight six six, eight six six.
Six zero seven.
Six zero seven.
Four nine four six.
Four nine four six.
And we'll post an after meeting, we'll have an affair.
And I wanna just...
Everything with Harvey Payton, and they do it on hold.
I wanna say, I've been in constant contact with Senator Schumer, he called right away to find out how we were doing, how things are going. He said, he said, when the time, when the time, when we're done with search and rescue, and we're ready to find out how we're gonna get our homes rebuilt and repaired, we will get FEMA here, okay? It's not acceptable anywhere else unless they're here. Nobody wants to sit on hold, nobody wants to wonder if they're coming or if they're gonna do anything. FEMA will be out here, they'll be answering your questions, and we're gonna do it as soon as we possibly can.
What about the schools, sir? Why don't we do it on children?
Hold on, we'll get to that topic next, alright? Right now, 1-866-607-4946. The intent of this meeting is to leave this meeting with a follow-up meeting, okay? At the follow-up meeting, we're gonna push to get a FEMA representative here to tell us when they're gonna be here in force, okay? So, just to generally speaking about FEMA and flood, alright? All flood insurance is covered by FEMA. Even if it's through Allstate or something else, that's your, that's your individual broker. But the federal government is FEMA, it's confusing to people. But you have flood insurance. Flood insurance breaks down into two sections, it's either structure or structure and contents. Structure, I got hit in ninety-two, there's some things you should be aware of that was worked positively and might work for you. Most of us have structure, because we're required to have structure as a condition of your mortgage. When I got hit, it covered my rugs, covered my floors, covered my dishwashers, covered my washing machines. That's what it covered in ninety-two, because they were built in, alright? Contents covers all your clothing, your couches, everything else. I'm not gonna tell you what they're gonna cover right now, but some people are saying, if you're cleaning up, and you got washing machines and dishwashers, which you might think are contents, but may be covered by structure, to save them and put them in the alleyway as opposed to throwing them out. Okay, so that's flood, broken down into two parts, alright? Beyond flood, this is what happened in ninety-two. I'm not an expert, but I'll tell you what happened in ninety-two. Then you had FEMA grants, okay? You have a house, you rent there, or you have a house and it was already paid off and you don't have a mortgage. FEMA came in and grants were issued. Grants mean you don't pay it back. The third part of it was, they went with SBA loans, which was FEMA-backed, Small Business Administration loans. Again, I'm not trying to be an expert, I'm just telling you the different aspects of it. So, I, what you need to do, you need to call, if you have flood insurance, that carrier, whether it's Allstate or somebody else, they'll route it to FEMA, they'll set up an adjuster to come out. You also, even if you have flood insurance, need to call FEMA. Everybody does. I know we're having a hard time getting through, we're gonna hope to leave here with a date set, because communication's a problem in town, and come back and hope to have them here. But that's just a small breakdown, I don't know if it helps, go ahead.
There's another number for FEMA.
Give it to us.
It's 1-800-621-FEMA.
I got in touch, number.
Alright, listen, we're being told two things, you can try both numbers, 1-800-621-FEMA. Alright, I'll tell you right now, there was a FEMA guy at my neighbor Barbequins today, measuring and getting ready to do, you know, work of estimate on a computer boy. So they're starting to come around, here's what happened in ninety-two. They flew them in from Texas, Arizona, Oklahoma. They're coming in right now by flights, JFK was closed, they're putting them up in the hotels, they're gonna come down here. We are going to get them down here. I know everybody's situation, I'm in the same situation, you wanna know when, you're gonna get reimbursed for your loss. We're gonna hope to cover that in the follow-up meeting, go ahead Ricky.
And the mayor's press conference last night, because I'm staying where I had TV, he said that Lower Manhattan and Brooklyn were gonna get electrical service first, because they have underground services, and we have overhead wiring that we can expect seven to ten days before they come to Queens. Also, the police commissioner said neighborhoods that don't have lights, they would come down with generators and lights, and put them through the neighborhoods to try to keep them safer. I've seen one here, I haven't really seen that much.
Alright, so I don't know if you heard in the back, Ricky said that, for most of us who aren't getting news, is that the mayor says that Manhattan and Brooklyn are coming on first, mainly because of the way it's structured, they're underground feeds, we all know that if you go in Manhattan, you don't see overhead wires. They're gonna come on first, they're telling them on the news to anticipate seven to ten days for Queens. That's what the word is right now, okay? We don't know if it's gonna be any faster than that or any less than that, but that's what the word is out there, if you haven't heard the news. To the question in the schools, because I don't wanna get away from that. Ma'am, you had a question, go ahead.
Yes, what about PS47, and what do we do with our kids?
Alright, well...
Many of us are not here, some of us are at evacuation centers, at family members. What do we do with our kids? And many of us are public city school workers, and we need to know, the mayor wants us to confirm, where do we put our kids? The kids need structure.
The last update that we had on schools was that the schools located in the Zone A areas, like PS47 here on Broad Channel, the goal is to have it open by Monday, however, however, if the Buildings Department determines, or the School Construction Authority, SCA, comes in, determines, for whatever reason, that is not structurally sound or safe in any way, the school will be closed until they, until they can remediate. The children will probably be put on buses to other schools. We don't know what schools, we don't know when, we don't even know if that's happening here, so don't get excited about that.
Well, we need to move over to school Monday, if you're anticipating the coming of a ten day, we know why. Power is in the condition.
The priority...
We're gonna swallow it, for our children.
The priority is to restore power, the priority is to restore power in the Zone A areas, especially the ones that were hit the hardest, including Broad Channel.
We want our children, it's not acceptable. We want portals here, or some kind of thing to keep our children...
That's a good idea. That's a good idea.
Like you see at high schools and middle schools.
Alright, I hear you. Thank you. Hold on.
The question was, what about mold, is that what you're saying? Yeah, mold, okay. In the school, as well as your homes? Mold is a concern, yeah, mold's a concern. You know what, you might have to rip your walls out? Nobody's, I know people who were flooded and didn't remove the walls, and they said they didn't have a problem. This flood, I think most people are gonna be removing their walls. Whether it's in your home or the school, you're right, mold's gonna be a concern. Can't get an answer right now whether or not there's gonna be mold in PS47. PS47's gonna be evaluated, it's a good point. We need the city to come back to us as soon as possible and tell us what that evaluation is, and what can we expect to do with the children. And if it's not gonna be usable, then the point made about having maybe a temporary school set up is a good one. That's the point here, exchange these ideas and let these guys go back with them.
Let me just say one thing very quickly about the children. She's absolutely right, the children of this community need structure, they need stability, they need us to be strong and to be role models for them. Now, tonight, at the thing, the dinner that we're having here, somebody actually donated a hundred Halloween pumpkins, because they felt that the children of this community missed out on a holiday that they were looking forward to. So bring the children here tonight to have a bite to eat and to have pumpkins. The idea is to reassure them that everything is going to be okay.
And, and you got a question?
Yeah, Danny, if you don't mind, going back to FEMA, as we all know, our cell service dropped.
Quiet.
Going back to FEMA to get in touch with us, we all know our cell service dropped, some people call on the internet, I have people saying they're trying, we really don't know if one name and numbers are gonna be...
We'll repeat it, quiet.
At the meeting, if, just say, we didn't get through, at the meeting, can they take the information then?
Okay, we got a great point, the cell service is down, we, okay, I'm giving you a question, the cell service is down, someone said, we can't get in touch with FEMA even if these numbers are any good. Could we set up and structure a meeting so that if FEMA came, we could make it a meeting where we could then make that, where you make your claim, right? That's the question. So that's a great point, okay?
We're gonna make sure, there's FEMA forms online, if people can't get to them, we're gonna get them here, so people can fill them out and collect them and get them to FEMA right away. So we'll make sure the forms get out here, so people can start to make the claims.
Look, the idea is, uh, we're not sure today, but before we leave today, we're gonna pick a day, because otherwise we're never gonna get in touch with you. Is to try and pick a day, maybe Monday. We come back down here with a meeting, and at that point, we have FEMA here. And if they take the claims, take the claims, and if not, tell us that you're coming down the next day to take the claims, okay? We need to have it set up, instruction, so people can get these claims in, I understand.
What you got, Mark?
I got a security plan, Nancy. Night falls, I've seen quite a few moves in the area, not a lot of feet underground, my question is, at night, when there's people walking around town, I think around town, I haven't been approached by an officer, saying, you have ID, and it's getting out of control, and people are gonna have an emergency period, they don't need, I know they don't want...
Alright, the question is for the inspector, it's about, it's about, the police presence so far has been noted in the patrol cars, and Mark said, you know, I don't see anybody walking around, questioning me even himself who lives here, to ascertain whether or not they belong here, or at least to get that presence of somebody walking a foot post, is that something that the PD is considering?
Alright, again, security is certainly a concern. Security is certainly a concern of us, absolutely. And I'm trying to get these officers, all my officers, to slow down, to give a little bit more of a presence here. I can't put them on foot, I just can't cover this entire aisle on foot.
It's fifteen blocks north.
I'm not thinking, after, after the line, security is the entire, I'm very close.
Shut up and let him talk!
I've personally chased people into sixteen, three times in two nights, people skulking around, who are you? I know everybody in this freaking town, I know every face, but I know if you don't belong here, what are you gonna do? I have to take a pair of somebody in my own property, what are you gonna do? You gonna put the cuffs on me, on any of these people? What's the answer? Get out of the car, slow down, question people. I don't, big deal, you drive up there, pop with your lights on, big deal. I'll stand out there naked and you wouldn't stop. Listen, guys, the point's well taken, alright? The point is well taken, alright? We'll talk to the inspector afterwards about the concerns. Today I heard there was houses getting broken into on Ninth and Tenth Roads, alright? I think the point is, what Mark's saying is that, in addition to the patrol, and I think this is an adjustment on the part of the patrol officer, you're right, normally patrolers, you drive around, and what you're looking for is that guy stealing a car or something. Now, the guy's gonna wanna go into a house, because nobody's there. We'll talk to the inspector afterwards, what the point you're looking for, is a more detailed, you know, maybe stop and look, and who's out after nine, ten o'clock? If you're out after nine to ten o'clock at night, I think it's a legitimate question to ask somebody to stop and say, who are you, what you looking for?
Kevin Christian.
Alright, just, boy, give it to Kevin, just on the note of security, there's been some reports in other neighborhoods, fake FEMA people coming around saying, hey, I'm FEMA, open your door, I'm Con Ed, open your door, alright? It's already been reported in other neighborhoods that we're hearing from on some of these social networks, that they're being, they're using that as an opportunity to get in. Talk to people, especially your neighbors, nobody should be coming around late at night. Most of us are outdoor today. You see somebody, they're knocking on some old lady's door, nobody's there, question them, what's going on? If they're out late at night, that's something to be concerned, because nobody from FEMA or Con Ed would be late at night.
Yeah, Kevin.
I got two names. First of all, there's a lot of us on this island, our doctors are in Rockaway, we can't get prescription medicine anyplace, we can't get prescriptions from the doctors, they're all full of stuff, somebody's gotta come in for that.
The question is, how are we gonna get the prescriptions? Great point, okay? We're putting it down, we are taking these points down. Like I said to you, we're not gonna have answers to everything. But us here, we're a bunch of people whose house got flooded. But that's a great point, you got a good idea, we're gonna bring it back to them, hopefully all of these ideas at some point in time can be addressed by, what can we do to fill them and help the people?
Michelle.
This is Donna. No one from FEMA is gonna knock on your door, take nine to nine and look at your address. So you don't really have to go in there.
Alright, good point, FEMA will only come by appointment, so if anybody's knocking on your door saying, hey, I'm FEMA, don't let them in, okay? Next one.
If we don't have cell service, we can't receive the messages from our insurance companies to make an appointment for them to come. This prolongs the entire process.
You're right, we need to try and get in contact with the insurance companies and come down here, and set up some possibility of a meeting here where we can put these forms in. They're trying to get the cell service back, the cell towers got wiped out in the storm, and I understand that's a big part of the problem.
If we don't have power and PS47 isn't safe, how do we vote?
Okay, we got a good question, we got an election coming up. And PS47 is our election poll in place, and if we can't go into the school, how do we vote?
Who cares?
The question is about the election on Tuesday. There is still going to be an election on Tuesday. Now, in Breezy Point, for instance, where they normally vote in St. Thomas More, that is not, no longer a suitable polling place. One of the things that the Board of Elections called the city and the mayor's office this morning about was setting up tents or outdoor polling locations. They were also talking about consolidating polling locations. However, anybody here can still vote on an absentee ballot, so even if you're not going to be in town...
There are.
Oh, there are absentee ballots.
Where?
No, I'm saying, no, we can bring those applications back to the community, we'll bring them tonight for people who say, you know what, I got enough to worry about, I don't wanna be bothered. We'll bring the yellow forms, we can have them here tonight at the dinner for people that wanna vote on paper. I understand it's the last thing on your mind, you've got a million other things to worry about, but it is very important, and for the people that wanna do it, they ought to be able to know where.
He's out of his head, twenty minutes. Go ahead.
Two heads reliable phone service established, what's the best way to contact God forbid me, 911 or PD or whatever? Means that can be a football every couple blocks, so at least you could at least speak somebody on radio.
One ambulance, you're right.
Alright, as of tonight, hopefully it's pulled up as we're speaking, but there's gonna be an NYPD command center set up. It's there, right?
Alright, good stuff.
Alright, we've been trying to get this here all day, since I spoke to some people last night, it's on West Ten, alright? Everybody knows where it is, there will be somebody there twenty-four seven, they'll have communications, they'll get police to you as quickly as possible, EMS, whatever it may be. But they're there now, and they'll stay there. And they should have some lighting, I don't know the extent of it yet, the question before was about the lighting, but they'll be there from here on out, and they will have some lighting, we'll see tonight how much is there. Okay, the question is, can we get temporary showers, possibly, was it temporary? Laundry, laundry facility setup. A gentleman was talking about down south when they got hit, and some of the examples that were used before, that's a great question, we'll put it on the list, and hopefully we can get a answer on it.
Listen, listen, listen up, one minute, this is the plan, wait, when we're done here today, we're gonna break up the committees, we're gonna need thirty, forty dedicated people, and let's, people work on Con Ed, people work on FEMA, that's how we're gonna do it, a few people can't get it done. So after the meeting, we're gonna do that, if you're dedicated, let's break up the ten committees, or twenty committees, and we'll meet, okay? So that's the plan.
I got a question. Go ahead.
Not most of us lost our vehicles to get out of town, right? You guys gonna set up some kind of like a shuttle station, to at least get us to a place where we can get our own supplies, get our own medicine, get to our own doctors?
Okay, so the question is, there's no transportation for everybody who lost their cars, and can the city, FEMA, OEM, somebody, set up a shuttle bus that would take us up north, that would run back and forth, so people go up and get supplies? That's a great point, okay? I'm gonna ask most of the councilmen and the assemblymen to bring that back, and ask to us if they can get a shuttle bus from the MTA that would run from, say, Broad Channel, maybe up to Liberty Avenue.
Yeah, kid.
Right, just a point, the fifty-three is running, I know that's not what we're looking for, but just as a point of information, it wasn't, it just started running.
Yeah, kid.
If and when we get generators, can people charge their cell phones? I've been doing it out of my house for all my neighbors, but I'm gonna run out of gas.
But I think we're gonna try electric here, we're gonna have a little help here.
Can we bring up here to charge them?
Yeah, we got a generator coming, it's a good point, hopefully we get some power set up, and then people... Now, you got it, listen, if you got a structural, my house foundation washed out, okay? The question is, how do I know if my foundation is being compromised from the storm, okay? Basically, it's gonna come down to, you call your insurance adjuster, he's gonna walk out, you got shifted block, you got some of the courses that are cracked, something indicates there's a problem, the engineer from the insurance company's gonna make that determination. Obviously, if you're missing block and it's falling over, you got a problem. If it's suspect, they should still come down and do an assessment. If you don't like the answer, you gotta get your own engineer. But if it's an obvious problem, it will be covered by insurance, from what I understand.
Jack Allen. My nod is, should the Buildings Department are sending a SWAT team, Buildings Inspectors, they just finished the South Shore of Staten Island yesterday, so from the day after the storm, up until last night, the Buildings Department was on the South Shore of Staten Island, and what they're doing is putting a sticker on people in the evacuation zones. A green sticker says, it's okay, the house is structurally sound, you can go in. A red sticker, or a red X with the sticker, means, don't even attempt to go in there. A yellow sticker means so-so, call your adjuster, but they're trying to make it very easy with these stickers, and they will be coming to Rockaway and Broad Channel, they probably started today, they hired a whole SWAT team of inspectors.
Go ahead, Jack.
Along the lines, along the lines of security along the boulevard, after dark, obviously the command center on Tenth Avenue, put people at ease, but it's a twenty mile stretch, and when the sun goes down, it's a big block, twenty blocks. If we could get either through NYPD, or through FEMA, some lighting, every, every third or fourth block, use the light up the boulevard.
Okay, the question is that, in addition to police concerns about the security, okay? The fact is, it's dark, it contributes to it, could we get some of these, basically, light towers, like we set up in Ground Zero, they're on every corner, every third or fourth corner, we'd be happy with. I think that's a great point, and I hope that somebody can come back, some building, you got something to speak to on that?
Yeah, we will push right away for the city to bring in a few light towers, a few would make a very big difference, so we're gonna see if we can get some over here.
Right, the next question was, the follow-up was, Howie Beach has the traffic enforcement on every light to help traffic go through Broad Channel, it's a great point, because the traffic's backed up because of that boat that's in the middle of the highway, and nobody lets anybody make a left turn, and so a couple people almost get into fights and a couple accidents, so we definitely need to get some, some traffic enforcement, doesn't have to be PD, it's right, okay?
Guys, question.
Question is, is there any opportunity to bring in a portable cell tower, so that we can have service here for the emergencies that we have? A gentleman's saying that, you heard that before? Alright, gentleman here says that in the south, in the past, they've set them up. We're gonna ask the elected to look into it. Alright, Breezy Point is saying is getting one next week, so if Breezy's getting one, obviously we want. We're gonna ask the city elected officials to go out and say, whatever they're getting up there in Breezy Point, in terms of, uh, communication, we want the same thing.
Hold on, hold on.
Alright, so, hold on one second. Alright, so I'll just get the question out, and then we'll ask the councilman to answer. The question is, I moved out of my house cuz it's flooded, right? I'm in Glendale right now, but my kid is, goes to PS47. And when school starts back up, what should my child do, okay? Alright, Senator Schumer's here, we're gonna ask him to come up and speak.
With law in place, wherever you go, wherever you're living temporarily, you have the right to walk into that school district. You don't need any papers, no proof of residence, you temporarily have, and you can...
Alright, so, we're getting, we're getting, we're getting on the floor, he answered it, says that, you know, depending on what you're looking to do, if, okay, you wanna keep it down, folks? If, okay, you are living in Glendale or somewhere, you should have to write, according to this woman here who's with the Education Department, assuming, to walk into that school, so you have temporarily reside here, my child needs to go to school. Obviously, the question is, you know, if 47 is open, of course you can come back, you gotta provide the transportation, maybe the city can provide the transportation, but it does speak to that issue. Alright, I'm, I'm gonna hold the questions for one minute, okay? We got Senator Schumer here, I'm gonna just ask for a round of applause and the senator to make the broad channel. Alright, the senator's here, and, um... I'm gonna give the senator, I'm gonna give the senator the floor, and I'm just gonna summarize, Senator, you know, we've been hit unbelievably hard. Every single house here was underwater, this place was under four feet of water. And, hold on, guys. And basically, right now, we're running out of gasoline to get off the island, we're running out of food. We need a number of things to survive down here. We're very self-resilient, but we need things, we need questions answered, like why is there no gasoline? When are we gonna get electric back on? Can FEMA come down here? No one can file a claim we can't even get through. Uh, police presence and local things we're addressing, the heat is a big issue.